Hey, Mike. Notice he keeps posting it himself, so he's not at all ever.
How? It's James.
Or James. I know. I get it.
Call this meeting, Oregon City Council, ten to agenda, January ninth, two thousand twenty-three, six thirty-three, on the council chambers. Called your order. Patrick.
Here.
Okay, Morgan. Here. Cabal.
Here.
Dolly.
Here.
Renswell.
Here.
Agenda approval. I want to move number eight after four, since Sean says he has prior engagements, so he wants to keep this out. So consent agenda approval of hence of twelve twelve, two thousand twenty-two, and special meeting one for two thousand twenty-three. Approval of financial statement as of twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Approval of bills as present, approval of local license, hometown food, approval of local license coming down.
I'll say no. Man.
Morgan. Yes. Cabal. Yes. Dolly. Renswell.
Yes.
For Stewart, we go. Monica.
Hello. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to come before you. Um, I'm here representing the Stewart people. Uh, Brenda Dudley was hoping to be here tonight too, but wasn't able to make it. Um, I, um, have kind Doris, um, betches trying to rule me to take over for her. But I don't know how well that's gonna go, because she calls me anyways, you know, everything you do, so. But I'm working on it. Anyway, I'm here, um, again to ask, um, for some supplemental money to help pay for Brenda Dudley's salary. Um, last year, um, the council gave us five thousand dollars very generously, and I thank you so much for that. And then, um, her salary is, um, ten thousand two hundred dollars for the year, which comes to eight hundred fifty dollars per month. Um, once I get, uh, um, find out what, um, the council is giving us, then I also apply to the hotel motel tax, um, for the rest of it. Last year, they, um, granted us, um, five thousand dollars as well, which brought us, um, to two hundred dollars short as far as paying for our salary. And we do have some funds, but as you can see, um, we charge fifty dollars, um, per rental. And if we have around fifty rentals, that's only two hundred and fifty dollars, um, a year that we generate through, if my math is correct, that we generate through rentals. And so we're hoping to not have to come up with that extra two hundred dollars if possible. We do use money to do improvements in the building. For example, if you've been in there lately, um, we put up photographs from Stewart, from, um, of Stewart's history, some really beautiful photographs. And, um, so that was money that came out of our account, and so we're hoping to, um, be able to pay, um, Brenda's salary all through, um, the very gracious money from the council and the hotel motel packs. So this year, we're requesting five thousand two hundred dollars if, um, we are able to do that for us, we would appreciate it so much.
Lori, have, have you guys ever raised the rates on that at all?
No, that's the amount that it stands since we started doing this.
Have you, was there talk about maybe raising some rates?
Um, well, not a lot. Um, Doris has always been very committed to keeping it very affordable for people. Um, that was her vision when she, um, because she's been the force behind the continuation of this. She had a lot of people in the beginning, many of whom have passed away since, um, the restoration started, including Dick's, um, father. And, um, their vision was always to have a community building that was affordable for anyone. And so Doris really would like to keep the rates as low as possible. I mean, that is something that if, um, things continue to rip, uh, prices continue to fall off and everything that we may have to look at. But, um, Brenda hasn't raised her salary, um, in the last two years either, so, um, you know, we've been very grateful for that.
And I guess where I was going with that, it's not so much, um, to help fund Brenda's salary, it's just the upkeep on the building.
Right.
If, if you had to charge an extra five, ten bucks, you know, just to put in your guys' account, just for.
And we do have a fifty dollar deposit, so that if, um, there was a lot of cleanup afterwards, or if something was damaged, we would have that money, but it's given back to the person if there's some damage.
And I'm glad to ask that question, because I was gonna kind of lean that way too, you know, with everything going up everywhere. You know, just about every place has had to raise their prices somewhat, you know.
Okay.
Five, ten, you know, uh, even twenty-five, that's still pretty low rate at seventy-five, and giving the fifty dollars back, if you went to sixty, you know, you got an extra ten bucks.
Right.
And, and I'm not saying you need to do that or anything like that, but that should be something on the radar.
That's something that we can certainly talk about.
Yeah, you know, on that.
Right.
Again, I, I totally agree with him, I was going the same way, it's not so much to pay for the salary. But, you know, just even the cleaning supplies are so high priced, you know, everything's so high priced, it can help your guys out.
Exactly.
Does the hotel motel, when you go to them, do you only always ask for five thousand, or do they match with the city?
Um, well, I ask for the rest of the amount. I told them, you know, that we wanted ten thousand two hundred dollars and, um, that the city was paying five thousand, and so then I asked for five thousand two hundred, and we were granted five thousand.
Yeah, I think that's what it's been since I've been on council, it's always been the same. And Ash, are you okay with the extra two hundred?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Say. Move on around the floor, second by Morgan, how do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Cabal.
Yes.
Dolly.
Yes.
Renswell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
I appreciate it a lot.
Okay.
Um, I just thought I'd start with, so the official year-end totals. Uh, we ran six hundred and fifty calls and a total of three hundred and eight transfers or billable calls, um, which considering our previous high was five hundred and thirty-three calls and two hundred and ninety-three transfers. Um, we beat that by a considerable amount, so it's hard to say what this year will bring, but doesn't seem to be starting any, any slower, so, um, just to kind of start off with that. Otherwise, um, what questions do we have about, and we talked about this last meeting, and now we've got some time to evaluate what's going on there, or drop off any questions?
Financially, you're okay with?
Yes, it could be considered.
I, I would also just like to commend you for providing this, uh, I guess job summary to us. You know, we didn't have that last time, and, you know, very informative, so appreciate that.
Uh, my question is, where's your job description at? I'd like to see what you give me, what Luke's job description is, what do you do?
Good, yeah, and so actually I made that from scratch, as, as I didn't really have anything to, um, uh, compare it to or, or start with, um, which, when I was making that, I, I too thought to myself, well, there needs to be, you know, not only for that position, mine, and then just the paramedics and EMTs, and, and even the non-clinical drivers, so we have something.
You don't have a job description.
Uh, I mean, not specifically, no, not that I've seen or been given or ever, um.
Ash, is there a job description for the EMS director?
I think we do have one. We have, yeah, we have. We don't, we haven't seen.
Okay, yeah, I, I just, I didn't have that to reference when I made that, so that's just kind of something that I, you know, kind of looked at other job descriptions and what I had in mind, um, for when that started, so, or what that person would do.
I'm pretty new when it comes to, to all this, and so I, I may be not the one to, uh, I mean, we have some other people here, a lot more experienced, but I guess I had a couple of questions, I've been thinking about this quite a bit. And I don't know, are we opening up any sort of a can of worms? Making an assistant position where, um, you know, fire rescue, an assistant, or, uh, you have chief rehab? I mean, I, I don't know if there's other positions that say, well, you know, EMS got a position, I mean, how do we justify, where do you go, where you can justify?
Fire has a board, so there's.
They have a command structure.
Yeah, they do, they have the chief and the assistant chief and a couple of lieutenants.
First captain, second captain.
Yeah.
First lieutenant.
And I think the police structure.
Their sergeant.
They have, yeah, they have the chief and sergeant, promoted, maybe to sergeant, and there's, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a structure for how many years of service and things of that sort for your sergeant, so that works that way.
And I used to have assistant city administrator, so the reason that we kind of talked about it is, you know, you know, we had some issues with the rescue the last few months, and we did some kind of investigation and stuff. And the result of all these investigations is requiring some steps to retake to sorry for bringing another professional to be his assistant, you know, to be able to carry out with us some of these recommendations that we see. So we talked about it, tried to see, uh, if we have one or the other that is qualified to that, was recommended to. Luke has been with us before even Sean took over the department. Wizard of the Loop looked to see if he can carry along with us on these recommendations that we have concerning the training and scheduling of the staff. And he provided a good demonstration that he is willing to do that, and he is capable of doing that. He's licensed professional, and he can speak on his behalf, I don't speak on his behalf. This is where the idea all came from, is to kind of try to get this development back on track by doing this first step.
And you think that might alleviate?
It, it will get the job back, because we had some issues that we need to work on. It will be allocated to him, you know, as an assistant that might get us where we wanted him to go. Because after we got done with all this investigation and all this stuff, where, where is he, the recommendation to form? He's gonna be involved in these things to help us with. That's where the whole thing came from. We were supposed to the council to see if you write what we see, if you wanna promote that and try to get the development back on track. There is nothing ready that we can say is going off the cliff or anything, we're just just trying to get it built. You know, we learn from the best and to get the future better than the best.
And a lot of these are, you have to have training and somebody filling in, just like when Doug Christensen quit, Pat come in for a year of training. And if something would happen, Ash, hopefully Sarah could help out, but she hasn't been there that long compared to what Michael was.
Right.
So I think you have to have.
I, I just have one thing before you finish.
Go for it.
So where I sit with this, and one thing I didn't think it said in here, but I think is nice, is the fact that both Sean and Luke live relatively close. It both take more calls, so we have more, if we have second hour calls, they can come and they can take those calls.
Luke's already a full-time employee.
Correct.
Uh, actually, officially, officially, I'm a part-time.
Well, I mean, yeah, he doesn't have full, he works.
I work full-time hours, yeah.
But he's not a full-time person.
More of the structure, that the new structure, uh, by having the allocation of training, the scheduling, all this stuff. He, he is not gonna change any of his steps of employment. The change will be in the structure of what he's doing and taking the money step higher of doing the scheduling, training, and all these things.
And she on salary instead of hourly, which allows him to come in and take.
So everything that I'm reading here, Sean can delegate this out, any of the paramedics.
But we don't.
Any of it, let me finish, any part-timers, he can delegate that, all of this. I can even go in there and create a schedule for him, that ain't a big deal, I'll have that done in two hours. I mean, what we're doing here, yes, can Luke do the job, um, that's not the question. My question is, we need to be looking at the director and saying, why can't you do these? Why can't you do this? Why do we need to hire an assistant director to do this job? That's why I asked Sean, what are you doing? That's where I'm at with it.
But Ash, how many years did we have to? You had Kelly and Jeff, we had Kenny Benlinian and Jeff come on, we've always had two.
But you're missing my point there.
Okay.
My point is, what is the director doing? I mean, need two people here.
Mr. Patrick, I agree, um, you know, and it's not to say that I won't do most of that. It's that, for example, when I came on and Joe left, Luke did step in there, but then nobody knew how Joe was doing any of that, where's the paperwork, what are the logins, you know, who do we need to email about this stuff? So it's not necessarily that it's so that I can do less work and not be there, or, you know, that I'm gonna say, Luke, do the schedule, and I never even look at it or touch it or anything like that, it's so that, you know, in my absence, or should I leave or something like that, which isn't like, not, that's not the point of this, but, you know, obviously there will come a time, right?
Yeah.
And, you know, so that there's some other person that knows the procedures and can just kind of step in there and take over should something like that happen, you know, what if I get into a car accident, can't work for six weeks or whatever, you know, I mean, all kinds of stuff. So it's not, it's not necessarily specifically to do my job for me, it's to have somebody that knows how to do that and has done it as well, so that it makes a transition like that easier.
We were very fortunate that Joe was the senior person up in Oregon, come down and helped us out, as long as he did.
Right, yeah, because even when Joe came on, that would have been, yeah.
I think it's gonna provide a lot of stability, I mean, myself, I think it's gonna help provide stability.
And I, I, uh, agree, you know, like with most private companies, you know, like my job, I'm the only person who can do my process right now. I was gone for a week, so it didn't get done, you know, so we have to have training, to train somebody to come in there and step in there and do it, and that's no different from this, you know, it's just kind of making it official, that this is the way it's gonna go, I believe. And I know I've heard, uh, an increase in two-hour calls, you know, it seems like they're, it's all the time, and it's, you know, I hope you can do it.
We're getting more calls for transfers and.
And just, uh, just one extra thing as well, it would be, um, it'd be good to have a second hour as well, a, a second person backing up as far as director, simply because there are occasions, both Sean and I have to have other jobs in order to support our family, so, um, we're gonna be busy on those jobs at that time. So, um, while Sean's at work, then if there's any, um, emergency call that comes out to where, um, this hospital was down, which hospital we're gonna transfer him to, and there's, if there's any employees on that service that need to, uh, they will actually know which direction to turn. Um, uh, having a second in command would be very essential at that point. And like you, like you mentioned, there could be emergencies that happen to where, um, at least everybody in, in the department will know where to turn to uh, for the, uh, for the answer, that actually has some authority because of the title, uh, as well.
So, because I, I was seeing as, um, Corey for a while there, I, I, I guess when I was thinking about this, I'm thinking, okay, we have to have someone to help with your workload on a daily basis, so maybe this is more like in case you're gone?
Right, there's, I mean, honestly, like workload-wise, I, I don't need him to do any of it because I don't have enough time, or, you know, some of that stuff just gets pushed to the back burner, like training, the state says we should do so much training and this kind of stuff, and, and so I can't be there all the time, I'm not there every time that somebody works, you know, once or twice a month or something like that, so. So that stuff just kind of gets put back, and, you know, this helps some of those things that I don't really get a chance to do very much, kind of bring them forward. It doesn't, you know, like doing the schedule, I do the schedule, that's no problem, like, like Corey said, I can do it in a few hours every month. But, you know, having somebody that if I'm gone or something, let's say I'm on vacation the last week or two of the month, then everybody can, you know, talk to Luke, or, you know, he's sitting there with somebody one day, and they're like, he has to work these days, and then he can throw them on the schedule. You know, things like that, so it's not, it's not so that he does those things and I don't, it's that so there's more than one person doing that or able to otherwise.
And Sean, where are we standing on where it's gonna be essential service? Yeah, absolutely, have, have.
Uh.
I mean, that's, it's gonna be voted on now?
Correct, the board, they're forming the board, um, and then once the, or board or committee, or however you want to put that. Um, and then they'll go through a couple of meetings, and they'll make a recommendation to the county supervisors, and then the county supervisors, well, they make a recommendation to the supervisors, the supervisors send it to a vote, and then it has to be voted on. It's kind of how the rest of that process works. So, so at this point, there's no, no real timeline, I would say November, like if we, if it's on the November ballot, that's probably a, a pretty good guesstimate would be as far as that, and then obviously, there's no way to tell, I mean, it just, it'll be in pass or alone at that point, so. So it's unclear what that looks like, so.
Make a motion. Are you good with questions?
Yeah.
Yeah? Uh, I'd make the motion to go ahead and approve the assistant director position at the rate in the proposal. And then can we review in like maybe six months, see how it goes?
Yes.
I mean, I'm not saying stop it in six months, but maybe just give an update in six months, just within.
Six months.
And that was the primary reason, well, maybe not the primary, but like one of the main purposes of having a specific job description would be to say after X, Y, Z, whether it's Luke or anybody else who are, who would end up in that position, it's, is this going the way we want it to with this person? You know, I mean, fifty-four thousand dollars is a lot of money, and, um, I think that, you know, you guys have to look at that the same as everybody else does, and so, you know, that's kind of one of the reasons for that, is to.
For me, I mean, he's already bringing, I think, forty-two home last year, but if you take into account his service hours, I mean, he is in the military, he does take some time off for training, so if he's, if you take that piece of out of it, he'd be at almost forty-eight anyways, right? So it's not like we're taking a huge jump, and we're not going hourly, we're going, or hourly, we're going salary, which allows for him to respond on a second hour, just in case we need it. So I don't think we're jumping too much, because if you look at it, and the.
And he does, doesn't get the results in shoes.
Right, and he doesn't get that.
He's, he already said that he's a wilder, so we're just wondering, I'm gonna stay salary fifty-four seven.
One other question, so is you moving first into this, second causes staff, do you feel anything that you currently do for us?
Negative, I'll be, uh, I will be maintaining my current hourly, um, I work forty-eight hours on, and I have ninety-six off. Um, but for those days that I will be at home, I will be able to run second outs, um, to take those additional calls. Um, we, we've seen an uptick in, uh, transfers from, um, Greenfield Hospital as well as Gutsford County. Um, in fact, I, I just talked to Levi, and he was saying that, uh, there, they didn't get the contract with Gutsford County, but, uh, he reached out and talked to me that, uh, they might not be able to staff it, because staffing is expensive, and so he was asking if we would be, um, if, if Stewart would be able to take up some of that slack. So that's where we're, we might see some pretty good expansion and quite a, quite a bit of revenue coming in from that, so long as we're able to fill those extra slots, because we don't want, what we don't want to do is we don't want to take an ambulance or an emergency response vehicle out of the city without having a backup.
So I'm just trying to qualify, moving from here, obviously there's an expense associated with that, just trying to have to backfill what you're doing for us now.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we have a motion.
Yeah, six months.
Well, yeah, just have an update in six months, so we.
Yes, whatever, six months.
I'll say.
Second, one more, how do you vote, Patrick?
No.
Morgan?
Yes.
Cabal?
Yes.
Dolly?
Is it a motion for a six-month review?
Yes.
Renswell?
Yes.
Ask Sean, will you?
Thank you.
Second, we, we continue to be on that.
Yeah, no.
Is that just something that Ash is looking to?
Yeah, that's, I just.
Gotcha, I, I just want, you know, people of us and, and with, um, one of the employees, and of course, that situation is complicated, but, um, you know, saying that the reason he didn't want to work here anymore was because we didn't have direct deposit, you know, I feel like we're, we're coming to a point where I want a specific answer, you know, I've talked about this for four years, and, and I'm not saying that like, oh, we need direct deposit, and everybody should have, and all sorts of, no, I just, you know, when somebody asks me, why aren't you doing this, I can say, well, it's X amount of dollars, or our software doesn't support it, or whatever specific reason to point to and say, this is why we're acting on that, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give you the specific, how we need to.
Okay, yeah, that's, I just, it's just, I just wanted to be something that, you know, I'd say publicly and, and, you know, could.
I, I, I will, I will.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Start good night.
Okay, five, one, hope you do a direct decision or something.
I believe, uh, Sarah placed in your packets, uh, the mowing contract extensions for the mowing and also for the spraying. Any questions, issues?
Do you have any issues this year, dude?
No, I really, I really didn't, uh, once, once we got in and got going, because it was a late start, because of the contract snap due and stuff like that, we had a pretty big battle, because it was a mess, because it had waited so long. And, uh, I heard no, I heard no complaints about getting it, you know, whipped into shape and, and.
They did it very well.
I do too, and nothing, no issues with the spraying, so. And then, uh, I, C.
It's a motion first.
Okay.
Do you think if you didn't have any questions, would you motion?
I just, can I, I guess, so I know, uh, I, I think I know the reason, but I just want to say it here. Um, the original bid was twenty-six five, right? We gave him the contract, because we lost the original guy that took it, and it went for like six months, because we screwed up, and then came in November.
Correct.
Right?
That's.
And then we made it right, I think, by giving him another, another amount, and another payment, which actually made him more than what his original bid was. Okay? And now, um, it looks like he's asking for thirty-two thousand, so it's, to me, and just bear with me, this is my, look at it, it's, it's not really extending the original contract, it's, it's a new amount, um, on there. So I don't know if anybody else has any, you know.
Just real.
Well, technically, we, we didn't, we, we did.
It was our fault.
It, we did, but it was our fault, so we took care of it. You know, if we had, if we had done it right, he would have actually been less money than that. And I know we got an email that says, uh, thirty-two thousand, what it should have been for last year, but that is five for seven months, is that six, but we screwed up and we took care of it. So just, I don't know if we need to, uh.
It should be eight months, they're going from April fifteenth to November.
Right, but we, yeah, but we were gonna do seven, because we missed the first one, and, and everything.
So we missed the first, and we messed up the last.
And we messed up the last, but we, we took care of it. It's just not that we're, we're not doing the same amount, doesn't make a whole lot of difference, I'm just, I just want to bring it up, and I don't know if we, I don't know, do we need to do anything different, or just move forward?
Can you say seven more? Can you sit seven more?
Eight, it'd be eight months, because, yeah, because it's April through November. So it's, to me, it's not an extension, it's just doing a new contract, which, I mean, I don't know there, so.
Are you saying like, do we need to do anything different legally?
Yeah, re, yeah.
Do you know my answers to the questions, Ash?
Well, we can.
Exactly, it's a bid, like what we're saying. From the original bid that we accepted or the original.
Right, and it was our fault, we took care of it, but do we go back to the original amount? Do we just go ahead and accept this? Do we have to do something, what, what do we do?
We can consult with the lawyer. On that, we're gonna have a special meeting coming up in two weeks.
I don't need to add that because he just made a deduction.
It's, so, but it's a council can move on these things if.
The DASH is lowering that.
One is simply he's asking for less per month than he did.
Yeah, that condition, yeah, that's what, that's what I'm gonna notice.
Might be a little less than.
So we were there for pretty much the seven or seven months at twenty-six-five.
No, I don't think that was his bid.
Yeah.
Twenty-six-five.
Yep.
I thought.
That's his bid.
Sorry.
Yep.
So last year, so he was saying that he got paid forty-four hundred dollars a month last year and now he's proposing for a thousand a month this year.
So if we had, if we had not screwed up, and that's, that's where it lays, is, is it does lay on us. I just want to be, I want to be on the same page as anybody. Divided by seven, he would have been thirty-seven eighty-five per month. Okay? But we did, twenty-six-five divided by six was the forty-four seventeen. Because we did include the November, so when we gave you November, we just did the forty-four seventeen for six thousand, okay? So yes, he's asking for less, but it's actually technically more than his original bid by about five thousand dollars. So I don't know if we need to do something different, if we can move forward, if we want to move forward, it's, you know. That's, that's something, I don't want to get us, have somebody come up and say, hey, you know, you accepted a bid that's, we gave them more, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you now. So yeah, that was pretty, yeah, five thousand, yeah. You, you getting that? Are you seeing that, Dave?
Yeah.
We can consult with the lawyer and like I said, we have a special meeting coming up two weeks from today. We can put it on the agenda.
Two weeks is like in a, close.
This is January, just keep that in mind. By the time if you decide to put it back out for bid, by the time you go through the bidding process and everything, you're gonna be behind the goal again.
I'm hoping maybe they'll, they'll say, no, you don't have.
Where we're at, right.
So Mike, you got those figures written down, so we'll have them for.
Well, they're just, they're pretty easy to do.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You take twenty-six-five divided by six, that's, that's what we paid him last year. We should have divided by seven, we messed up, you know, so.
It should technically be eight, guys, keep that in mind.
Right, right, it should be eight. And it should have been eight.
My silly, it's all screwed up because in here it says May ninth through October ninth, that's five months, right?
And that's when the contract was awarded, and that's how it was awarded.
But technically, it's April fifteenth and November fifteenth, yeah.
Right, because that's, we lost.
Oh, I know, because it, I mean, we were all screwed up when we get. Yes, yes.
Well, how much was his original bid for the whole thing last year?
Twenty.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six for all eight months?
Yes, yes. Okay, let's just, there's. Did he, did he understand that, was it once or?
No, it was an eight-month contract.
Okay, it was posted as.
Everyone, or most everyone was aware that it was an eight-month contract.
Everything dropped, everything dropped on, so then it got shorter and shorter and shorter.
And then got dumping his, he got the contract, got dumped in his lap plate and started with foot tall grass.
Yep.
I don't want, I want to avoid that this year.
Yeah, because that's, that's a very big expense for someone to have to go out there and take care of very, very tall grass.
When you gotta cut it every two days to get it cut, yeah. Huge.
And you, and your recommendation is to, to do this new thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two thousand? And yours as well?
Yes, money-wise, yes, because he's, he's giving you workfulness.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that legally is okay, right? That's what we're, we're, we're.
Food provides a legal thing, but money-wise, yes, he's saying.
How about item B?
So I was gonna say, do we need to make a motion on the spraying part of it then? We're good with that.
Spraying's the same, same bid as last year, same contract.
Yes.
Motion by Morgan on the spraying. And second?
I'll second it.
Patrick, how do you vote?
Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kavah?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Renzel?
And this is specifically on spraying?
Yes.
Then yes.
And then you're going to see.
Item C, city mowing bids will be in print this week, they'll be in the paper this week for everything that, uh, we know.
When does that close?
Uh, bids are due four P M, January thirtieth.
And then you'll present next month?
Correct. Like I said, that's subject to change if our employment base changes.
Are you looking at somebody?
If we can hire somebody, we've advertised, but if we have.
Oh, I mean, we had.
No, 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 no.
You said that.
No.
But, so, to clarify that, what happens if you get these bids? You award a contract and then you hire someone?
Award a contract, right?
Then I'm in a contract and they'll be doing.
And so you'll keep it for that year and then?
Yes, and address it after that.
So it'll be a one-year contract?
Yes.
Not.
And, correct. And it will be an all-inclusive contractor list that's printed, they will bid all of it or none of it. Because I don't want six different contractors mowing little pieces here and there, it'll all be inclusive.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm not going anywhere, I'm standing right here.
Just a second, just a second, so we will need two weeks from tonight, January twenty-third, six thirty, for logical. And those you are, yeah.
Six thirty?
Six thirty.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four, six thirty. He's got a six, yeah.
Yes. Item number six is cemetery software. The city hall staff has two different softwares. This G I S or G Works company, we currently use for, the utilities use it for their electric and water assets. We use it for our sewer assets. So basically, they've come to town, they've mapped all of like the manholes, they've got, uh, rim elevations, all of that. They have a G I S map of all of the water main, valves, hydrants, electric pools, pedestals, transformers, all that type of stuff. Basically, the same company has offered a cemetery layer. So basically what it is, is an overshot of the cemetery and it's gritted out by plot. Um, and Sarah and Nadine have, uh, dealt with these guys quite a bit, looking at the different, um, examples that they have. What we're trying to do is find something that is user-friendly, not only for myself, but for city hall staff to be able to sell plots, input data, that type of thing. Um, currently what they have is a, if I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, it is a, uh, spreadsheet type format. And when I get a map, I literally need a magnifying glass to read it. The, the print is that small, I literally need a magnifying glass to read it. I need something that's user-friendly because if I get notification from a funeral home on a noon or a Saturday or something of a burial, I need to be able to go and find it without having to call Sarah to come in on a weekend or whatever. I need to be able to pull it up on my phone and look at it, go find it, see if I need to do an opening early, you know? Weather conditions play a part in that. Um, they have two different prices here, you should have two different sheets. One of the prices, the other one is eight thousand dollars. The thirty-two dollars is the overlay, like they have looked at. Um, and that is with city hall staff, Sarah and Nadine inputting the data that we currently have. The eight thousand is for them to put in the data. And some of this data is gonna have to be site verified. So it's gonna be way easier for Sarah to print off this and give me a list and say, hey, can you check on this, this, this and this? To make sure, you know, if there is a burial already there, if there's a stone there, if there's any question like that, it's way easier for these guys to, uh, have it site verified instead of having this company put in the wrong data.
Sure. So did, did this company work with Forest and them? Because Forest went out there and they had to, they did something.
That is in the North, that is in the North Oak Cemetery and that is, and that is still in the works, that is not done.
Okay, I thought this, this was.
No, the surveyor that V and K had doing that project left them. And so they have a new guy that is, he's working on it, we're working together on it. And he's making progress, but it's, the other one took quite a while to, he spun his wheels a lot, let's put it that way.
Okay. So this has nothing to do with.
Correct.
This is, just as for city hall.
Gotcha, you're proposing, you, you recommending the thirty-two hundred.
That is correct, that is correct.
A little more time to work on.
It does. But we know the data that they're putting in is accurate.
The city hall is good.
Time is money, so I didn't know how really.
It's better to do it ourselves than having them.
So I just have a question, um, I guess it goes with anything that we have, you know, we got mainstream marketing, we had a guy come up, give us some co-calls, we got guys from the street cameras giving us a demonstration. So the city council can actually see this, can these guys do it for us? Can they come and show us, show the council what we would be getting and, and how it works so, so we can see? Because obviously, there's, there's something wrong with the software that we have now or something.
Correct.
That it's not.
Well, it's, it's antiquated, I mean, you, you update your computer software periodically, this hasn't been updated in quite some time.
You know, and, and I'd kind of like to be able to ask them face-to-face questions on like, what is their, uh, how can they scale that? So it, it is updated through the years, you know, so, you know, we're not five years down the road and then this is antiquated. You know, I'm not saying it is, you know, don't get me wrong, and there's nothing wrong with these prices. I just kind of like to see, I don't know if anybody else has the same issue or same question. I'd like to see what these guys can provide, as she said, there was a couple, maybe get the other people in here, see what they can provide us and go with something that's.
That's the same company, right?
We have, we have done that, I guess, with, the city hall staff has, has gone through the other company and this company and had demonstrations from each, I guess that's.
And, and, and I, and I appreciate that. I know, you know, before we dissolved the cemetery committee, they were doing this, they were, uh, had meetings with at least one vendor, I don't know if it was this one or the other.
No, it was the other one.
It was the F one. And, uh, they were kind of communicating to me on what need be done. I said, you need to bring that, that proposal up and show the council so we know what we're spending the people's money on, you know? And it's not that I doubt the, the intelligence of the city hall staff, and I would like to see it because we, we have other people, you know, bringing proposals and giving us presentations. That's my position on it. I don't know if there's anybody else.
So you, you said that utilities is actively using this on water.
This company, that's correct.
This company and they, are they having success with their?
Yeah, I mean, from my discussion, from my discussions with Ben and any issues I've had, yeah, I mean, we're having good success with them, that's just.
Do you know how many cemeteries they've done?
A lot, I don't know a number, but a lot. Because that's where they sent different, um, different examples and stuff to Sarah and Nadine of the other communities that they've done.
And for me, this is the same program we're already using, so Sarah, there's not gonna be retraining because Sarah and Angie and Nadine are gonna know how to use this, they're gonna be able, it's all gonna work together. I mean, if this is your recommendation, I don't think that.
And, and I'm not. We just don't think this, that I'm saying no to this, I'm not saying no to it. But I don't think it's a, a matter if we didn't, let's say we didn't vote on it today, is, is the city a sturd? Is the cemetery going to blow up or something? Are we gonna, would we have time to, to bring them in and, and show the council? Is that, I mean, I'm just throwing it out there for other people to, to say that they, if you want to vote on it, it doesn't matter, I'm just saying.
Well, even if we voted on it, we did, they did vote.
Yeah.
You know?
But it, it'd be useless if you voted to do this before you saw it.
Right, we'd be going off the recommendation, huh?
Couldn't, huh?
We'd be going off the recommendation from people.
Absurd.
Of everybody that actually does the job.
But the people that are going to be using it, yes.
But we never, we, we tried to go off the recommendation of people before, and.
It's the thing we're sitting in place. So I would love to make a motion to go ahead with Jim's recommendation along with Sarah and the other city hall staff and go with the thirty-two hundred dollar.
Okay, I got one question, Jim.
Yes.
You said to bring up an app on your phone, is there a way that local citizen would be able to find it?
Yes, yes, it can be put, it can be put on the city's website where they can, they can punch in a person's name and it will bring up that plot and show where it's at in the cemetery. Yes, that is correct.
Motion by Renzel.
I go ahead. Jim, did you say you would have skin-like for cemetery version?
Yes, yes, and they, extensively with Nadine and Sarah, with the different features and what's available. My whole thing is just to try to make it more user-friendly for Sarah and Nadine. When a customer comes in to purchase a plot, you know, a screen that shows, okay, these plots are in green, that means they are available for sale, these are in yellow, that means they're sold, these are in red, this means they're sold and occupied. Just so that it's more user-friendly for them, speeds the process up, makes it easier for the customer when they come in. I mean, that's a time in your life you want, when you're looking at something like that, you want it as easy as possible, I mean.
So what was the motion again, which prices?
So I, my motion was to go with Jim's recommendation of the thirty-two hundred.
Okay. And Ash, you're okay financially?
Yes, yes. We've been investigating this for the last.
So we have a motion.
The software.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
How do you vote, Patrick?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kavah?
No.
Dolly?
Yes.
Renzel?
Yes. Thank you, Jim.
One other thing from cemetery I want to mention, for years and years I've been saying, we've got to reset our stones. Mike Johnson said he was gonna, but then come on, when, and he hasn't done it. Year after year, I've been to a lot of these cemeteries, the North and South Oak are the worst cemeteries around this whole world.
Mike and I are in the process of that, right?
Okay.
Mike and I are working together to, to, uh, try and put a, uh,
Timeline.
Work, uh, timeline and workday together, yes.
And then Jim and Mike both agree, you just can't have anybody go up there and take a ten thousand dollar stone and try to set it back up.
The weight of these stones is, is tremendous. Oh, yeah, yeah.
A lot, a lot.
You have one of them, I mean, you have one fall on somebody, that's a huge liability.
I know that, there was one guy that used to live in town that would set up a stone every time he walked by it, when he was walking with his dog. I mean, he could lift quite a bit, but he set it up every time he walked by it.
My father and Bob Wilson different ones, set up the old, middle ones.
Yeah. Okay, it's in process.
Thanks, Jim.
Yep.
If you don't mind, when we do get this moving, I, I would be curious to see what, what it looks like.
Oh, you bet. Yeah, I don't, I think that's something you probably tie into the screen or something, Sarah?
Yeah.
The software.
Okay, seven, police department, street cameras, chief, three house sick, we do have Shane here.
Did you see that, right?
I'm an observer.
You know what, to set it up, I am gonna ask you one question only because you told me the answer to it. When you sit out on the interstate, how many cars do you see in approximately an hour that's going over eighty, ninety miles an hour?
During the week, it's slower than the weekends, but I've been out there and made two traffic stops within an hour of cars going ninety miles an hour plus.
Hi, Jonathan, thank you so much again for giving me the opportunity, um, like was.
Like was request in my last council meeting, I sent an email with the recourse and all information requests directly. And also I have information here as well. Now I have access to the monitors. I will send you, you know, provide you all information regarding the solution as well how it works and how everything goes step by step. And also I have the vice president, Dorian, of Genoptic. And I have the director of integration and doing all the projects in Iowa. So he been already working with the Department of Transportation doing in other cities. So he can also... So I thought with them. In case you can, just be, you know, they have any answer, then you can be in this area. Um, so can I start?
Yeah.
Okay. So right now, the company, Genoptic, like I mentioned before, we have over eighty-two years' experience. Genoptic has over four thousand nine hundred employees around. The closest office we have is in Jupiter. It's about a hundred thousand square feet. And we create, we manufacture. So we created technology, we, we are, we're creating. So you are not working with any distributor. You are dealing directly with a manufacturer company in this case. We invent optics from Germany. And that's how the company is. We have contract like for example NASA, the robot that is in Mars. We create the part of the top that have the radar and the set, the sensor and also the lens. We have optical manufacturing for over eighty years and we made rock safety. So we have over ninety percent of the cameras installed in Florida. We have three thousand cameras installed in New York, over thirty thousand cameras in UK. And also we do service management directly with over a hundred cameras in Canada. So we have experience, we have the years, plus you also have the manufacturer of the equipment. And we create also the software. Any developers or anything we need to change to make a fix for your needs in your city is no problem because it's in-house. So we don't have any intermediary or any companies like other vendors. This is the robot that we have in Mars. We create a top part with the lens with NASA. So we have good contracts directly also with Federer and also with whole lab security. And we are presenting in six region of the, of the world that we provide the services. This is a photo of the office Jupiter that we have over a hundred thousand square feet and over four thousand, four thousand three hundred employees and people counting. And with the revenue, it's approximately from one thousand to seven hundred and fifty-one millions a year. This is a storage company. Also, the company is pushing the, on the stocks market. So it's a really strong company that will provide a security and a safe better for the projects on the city. And we have the finance to do it for you. In this case, we are providing an offer at a project that is a third key program. It's zero cost for the city, no investment. And also the project is gonna be creating a new revenue. And also we're gonna provide a new technology for better safety and security of the municipality and the citizens here. It's different type of solution that we have. And then the city decide which one they want to establish or start the program. Red light, speed enforcement, twenty-four seven monitoring, school zone, air PR recognition in vehicle, mobile, all fixed units as well. Different type of equipment that we normally install in the area with different things. We cover up to six lane. We provide cyber security. So we know the type of vehicle, the color of the vehicle, the LPR. And we can have an alert directly sent to the police officer by telephone and text message saying this vehicle is stolen or this vehicle is involving a crime or it, or it's a vehicle that is not supposed to be near to any school or any area that you have childrens. So we have all the alerts directly to the officer. So any location that you have or equipment is like a twenty-four seven officer working there, no vacation. They don't go to restroom, it's over there, lights. And if something happened in the area, for example, accident or anything like that, you can go back up to sixty day or thirty days for each location. So it's not only the infraction of information, you also have twenty-four seven security in the whole area. Just to give you a, a short video to show you how this is gonna be working. In the case of Iowa, all the cities are allowed to install cameras on the highway area by the city limits. In this case, right now, it's about nine cities already doing this project in Iowa. This is how normally do. Camera will provide all the evidence package and the information to the police officer as well of what is the, who's the owner, what type of vehicle, where the vehicle is coming from, everything about that information. And that's really good to know that how many people visit or how many vehicle visit the city here in Stewart. So you will get that data as well. And also you can monitor in case you have an accident. You can look through the camera in live at the same time. Also in case the red light and infraction or new terms, that's different parameters in that area. I will jump there. It's closer to the second one. And in the safety and security, it's when you get the LPR, the LPR that recognize the plates, but also the camera recognize color and brands. So if somebody go to subway at nine, something happened, robbery or robbery or whatever, and they don't know the plane number, but they know it's a red Toyota, we can search only for red Toyota. And that's something that also provide more information to the police and specifically say where is the area. This is the camera. Send to the council today that we installed a camera yesterday on the highway and also today. And I'm gonna share that information that we captured and everything there. The cameras like you see here in different location, we explain to the officer that if the vehicle is stolen or anything like that as well, if any threat in the area or is looking. And if something happened in another city and you read the information of the vehicle, then you get that alert that vehicle came here. So something like that. This is a word point by point. This is the camera. We invented, and we also have the automatic license and plate recognition, super hardware. This is a little video to show you how live... With MLEX or DOT, we can see the plate, the model, color and brand of the car automatically is on the camera. Here is showing a photo that is, this was in Porpoise. We have an area a hundred percent with no lights. And we put the camera to make sure if we can read the plate with no lights in this scenario. And this is proof that we don't have any issue to read any information of plates. Also compare with other competitors, we can read cameras and the LPR layers as well because our equipment is like artificial intelligent. That's why it's totally different than the other technology. So it's artificial intelligent what we have. It's like what you see is what the camera see. We don't need to send the information to see if it's a one or two or B or something like that. The system can be using pool, permanent, mobile, in trailers. Normally, when we sign the contract and we start the project, Mr. Tulio, he will be in charge to do all the negotiation and all the paperwork that is required to the DOT and everything. And he already... And that is here in, in Iowa. And normally we installed this type of trailer in the beginning. So then we replace it with permanent pool, permitting and everything like that. So from day, a week or two week, we can start the project with no problems. We also increase the security in the school areas and school zone as well with the same type of technology that, you know, that is right now, in case anything happening in school, you will know from advance what type of vehicle. So you can know if somebody shooting another school like is happening right now in United States, you will get preventing that also as well with this type of technology in the school areas. Also, we're gonna be providing in the option that we have, it's an option that we can increase a little bit the percentage in our side. And then we can also install a digital equipment, cameras and technology to the vehicle that you have in the police department as well. So we will do all the investment in that for all this type of technology. Also, we provide the software. And over twenty years spending with the software, have creating the data, integrated data. We also have, the software has different areas. One is for the citizens. So the citizen, whenever you see a violation, they will be able to go online. And online review the evidence, the package, request, hitting. Also, they can call. We have our own back office and we also have the processing center. So we have people that answer the phone, explain how everything work with their people and the process and everything as well. And we mail the information and the evidence package as well to every citizen and we pay for everything. Here you will see a little video that has some question last time, how the process works. So the officer, we, is it going back or something like that? So the officer will review the information getting from the camera. The camera automatically get the information of the vehicle. It's integrated with Department of Transportation and with MLEX. And that's how we get the information of the owners and the vehicle. The officer will review that information and the officer just click enter and automatically his signature is gonna be added to the violation. And after that, we mail and do the whole process of the information of the ticket. Also, we inform the Department of Transportation as well like any other tickets in, in the whole state. As well for the end of the year, if the person doesn't pay, we also take the, the word to go with the state and tell them this person doesn't pay and then they cannot renew the driver license of the, of the vehicle registration.
Question about that.
Yes.
And, and you know, this is just people telling me, so I, you know, I have some objective. They said that they've got these violations and tickets from these sort of cameras. They've not paid it. They've not had any problems registering, you know, in the registration.
That's because maybe the cities signed with a company that they don't know how to process directly with the state. And it's a costing goal. We like a company to invest to integrate the system and the software for the city with them to let them know.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna cancel the registration. They don't have that in Iowa yet. What they do...
They'll not renew it.
If the, if, no, it's not even that here. If the city, and a lot of cities just don't do it. Some cities write it off or wait till you, because you have to go to the municipal court. Then they will judge and then you turn it over to the state. State does is go directly into their income tax at the end of the year and yanks it out and hands it to the city. Okay. We'll go over numbers in a minute, but when we go over your numbers, a lot of cities wait till there's multiple violations or wait till we get to a certain point, then they go before that. And, and just to be frank and honest, it's because they have so much coming in that they kind of wait till that compiles before they're putting it before a judge or municipal court. Because once that does that, then they get a municipal judgment against them, state's taking that money and that doesn't matter.
You're saying that cities wait for the unpaid violations to build up?
Correct. Correct. Or it's not a multiples or to be a multiple offender and then they'll go with that, just depending on their flow. So some cities, they have the control and that's, and that's, and that's how they regulate it.
So you could do it like every two years or every year and just wait till the end of the year or...
Every year, yes. You can, you can do it. A lot of places will do that. You can't necessarily wait a couple of years, but they're coming towards the end of the year, maybe in Q four, they'll stuck, they're stuck looking at all their unpaid tickets and they'll decide, you know, do we want to go to court on people that have two, you know, two, three, or just blanket it with everyone that wants, that has one? How many are there? And then they look at it, quite frankly, sometimes finance looks at it from a cost perspective.
And there's, there's a cost for the city to go to the court, right? Go to the court?
Which that's something we gotta do.
No, it's like a red light ticket.
The filing fee goes to the loser of the ticket. The person's gonna lose because they're not gonna show. So they're gonna actually pay the courthouse.
So it'd cost the city upfront to file it maybe and then they recoup that once the...
Normally, normally the courthouse charge a fee when you request a hitting.
Right.
And it's, it's not affecting the revenue for the city. It's mainly affecting the person because they can maybe get to pay a little bit more in the process.
I would have to make your call for our private handles.
I'm just saying, you know, maybe...
And I would, because I can't remember if you pay upfront or if it comes, if they just tack it out to the ticket when they...
Okay.
Hundred percent, so I don't have to be...
No, no, I appreciate that.
Yes, some city charges a fee on that. So this is how normally the violation look like. And it's customized. We can add the logo of the city, the information thrown in the back. And also they have a password, a unique password and a user for the person. They be able to go online and do everything. They can pay, they can review, they can request a hitting. So everything is available online and they can call us directly as well. Flow will be, the event is captured by the camera. The Genoptic event access, Genoptic DMB check the information right, right away. Then the police officer review and confirm. And then automatically the citation is generated at the post office and the post office will send the information directly to the customers or the citizens. In this case, we can send second notice if they don't pay, third notice. We also in the beginning of the program, we said warnings. We don't send any violation for pay. So the first week, we only send the warning for the people who, you know, is over the speed limit in that case. The printing and notification, we have an integration with the United States Office. So we get information when it's delivered, when it's delivered, all the information is there. And it's also available in the software that you guys have access and review all the information. So all the evidence package is in all this process because we never lose any court case because the evidence package is really, 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 really good. And also everybody who talk to the citizen is there with notes as well. And if the person have multiple tickets, you also will see it there. And in the officer, police officer providing some chance of warnings in the few, in the past, is everything is there as well. So you have all the information as well there. Financial report, you will see, this is really important. The state, we, we know how many tickets we issue, how we say to the state from this city, we issue this amount and the city is supposed to receive this amount. So you are not blind. You said, you have all the report and the data needed to track it up to, to the state in case the state at that time gets some money from the violation. But normally, I can say from my experience, sixty to seventy percent of the people paid in the first thirty day and starting the project as well. And then you see a reduction because the people know that the cameras are there. This is how it look like the cell phones when the cell phone receive notification to the police officers to let them know. We can create some groups and also the police officer are able to test in there and say, hey, I saw the, this, yes, I saw this car. And I don't interview with the vehicle or not. And they can communicate in the, in the test message as well. So it's another safety for, for the police officer. For the information requested as well, I provided an email to the council, previous thesis, council meeting. They already have requirements and they already approve the municipality to install any camera in city limits, highway stop like that. It was revised in January twenty twenty-one. Cities is still working in this project in Iowa. Everything so far is working with no problem and it's already approved by the DOT. And that's, he's a supportive. So you have any question regarding this, this part, he's right here to answer.
I've installed cameras in Waterloo, Cedar Rapids, Des Moines, small cities like O'Leary. So the DOT process typically is, if you're on state, on the state route, it typically require a permit. And I have dealt with them multiple times, so they're, they're not hard to get. I've never had one undenied by the DOT. They do have justification reports, but sometimes they would like to see the numbers, crash data, stuff like that. But I've never got one denied since I've worked in Iowa.
You said when the, when the officer gets these, it just comes in and then they can just click the button, approve or, you know, issue or not issue, warning, all that kind of stuff?
Yeah. Prefer to reject are the only two buttons. They'll have to worry about. They'll be able to review the whole thing, document, make a decision. And then they're either rejecting it because of whatever their reasoning. And then when they reject, they can put a reason as to the rejection. And then if they approve it, that's basically the button that, we already have their digital signature and badge number, puts it right on the ability and then gets mailed out the very next day. Ability and then gets mailed out the very next day.
And you, but if you reject it, you don't have to put a reason or do you have to take the time to put in a reason?
Yes, you have a space to put a reason.
But you don't have, you're not required to.
No.
They can, they can, they can do the generic, there's a, there's a box there, it'll probably want it, but there's the generic reason of of just officer's discretion.
Yes, it's like a regular.
So for whatever reason, it's just officer's discretion to, you know, they they can put some in there in case, you know, I couldn't read this one because of the. Angle of the sun's kind of wearing off the plate, they can put that in so our engineers can look at it and see if they need to. During certain times of the day or put a housing on. Um otherwise, most officers just say, yeah, for whatever reason, a lot of times, you know, whatever their reason, it's just like if they were in the field and they decide to give a warning or whatever. Officer discretion.
So is there anything like in the system, just with what industry I've been in the past, you know, like. Level of sign, is there anything to ensure that not approving like a thousand a day and not reviewing what they're seeing at all?
No, you in the in this case, uh when I obviously review the cases, uh you will see in the reports, in the daily reports, administrator can see how long it take to review each ones. So you can determine if the person take too fast enough, uh but you have all that reports to see if it's everything like that. Something that I want to have clear is, you know, the uh the company, we don't issue the violations. The camera doesn't issue a violation, the cameras are the eyes of the police, send the information, we know intermediaries to him directly and he decide. It's like he stops somebody and he's his own decision like a regular officer.
Now, but it's not he stopping somebody because traditionally Shane would stop me, he issued me a ticket. The camera is taking a picture of a vehicle and it's going to Shane and he, it's actually, to me, it's issuing the vehicle, the ticket. Because it's gonna go to the owner, so it could not even be me driving.
Yes.
Correct, that's why it's, that's why it's a civil liability notice instead of a criminal traffic ticket. But so in the ticket when you get it.
So I don't understand, that's what I'm.
It's going to the registered owner, not to the person who's driving.
You're getting basically a parking ticket over a ticket from the officer that gets you points and everything on your license, that's it there.
Aren't they considered?
Criminal, the criminal fine is gonna get you two points on your license or more and a larger fine than the camera ticket. The camera ticket is gonna be a lower fine than the criminal traffic ticket and there's not gonna be any points and it's to the registered owner like if you parked your car illegally. But when you get the ticket, if you had loaned it to your friend, there's a spot where you can fill out a little affidavit saying, this is the person that was driving and they will reissue the ticket to the person now. But under, under any type of laws, if they don't wanna, if they are saying, I'm not paying your, I don't care if you loaned your car, that was your mistake, then it does fall back on registered owner.
And these are non-moving violations?
Correct.
Versus moving?
Correct.
Because if an officer caught you speeding, it would be a moving violation.
Correct.
But because it's a camera, it's a non-moving.
Correct, that's the, that's the criminal versus civil part.
Yes, I've, what I see here and the question, um is also that maybe here the police have a laser dogs. And they just stop the people when you go over the speed, so that equipment that they're using right now maybe is not a digital one, they knew when you have one here. Right now, the guns are also digital, the officer not knowing to stop nobody, it's all the information to the software and everything. So right now, all the cities are moving from directly interact with people to issuing violations to try to avoid conflicts. Um and stuff like that, so now all the cities are changing laser gun for automatic laser gun, so we have that too and all that stuff information is doing that.
I don't think we have that here, do we?
What was that, I'm sorry?
The laser gun automatic digital, they take the picture and everything.
For the LiDAR.
LiDAR, we have a LiDAR, it's strictly outdated, but I mean, it still works, yeah.
Yeah, you said you would apply that to their vehicles, we've got four vehicles, you do all four?
Yes, when we do the negotiation, um.
Wait a minute, what are you implying all four?
Three.
We got four vehicles.
Are you talking about LPR?
The LPR cameras, yeah, we provide it, they're not only for the four vehicle, they got four vehicles, so we put like two cameras in each vehicle, a camera, yes.
Yeah, it would be part of that, we, I mean, we can provide. The other things that the police need to to better your.
And out on the interstate or over near our school, it'll be a pole alongside, but if it gets damaged, your company pays for it.
We also uh outright insure them eh in case something happen as well.
You're not, you're not responsible for the maintenance or the condition of that pole, the equipment on it or anything.
Even the mobile unit.
Even the mobile unit.
Cause we had a guy shoot one with a shotgun one time.
Yeah.
And typical installations, we also use breakaway poles, cause we've had that accidents with cars hitting them. And so we typically use a breakaway pole, so basically the pole will just sleep flat and the car will just keep going, so.
So I you see here in the reports in, um just get one from the big report that I sent to everybody, uh like City Rabbits on two thousand seventeen, how many violations they started issuing. How it was reducing by year of the violation and the incidents at that time, so you will see there is drop substantially after you start a project in the years. But for example, seventeen percent reduction or eight percent reduction is a huge saving life eh percentage. Eh because what happened is that the speed, if they go over the ten miles an hour or fifteen miles an hour, if they hit another another car. It's really, really high percentage of the death, so if they start reducing and driving, how their science is supposed to there. Then we're reducing the in case an accident, if somebody's gonna die, maybe it's an injury or or stuff like that. So this is a really good report, it's from Iowa, I sent the report, also by email to you guys, the whole report, made with city by cities as well. Something that I find. It's that in this case, City Rabbits here, say that the revenue for automatic traffic enforcement in public safety and they use that more to increase. For hiring ten more officer uh to get better eh safety and eh public safety in the city. So that money is used for the same city and help the city for the other budgets to be using now, really in another area. Um this is the revenue in automatically in the city. This is the camera when we installed yesterday and today eh here by um by way. Um in that information, that here, I can tell you how much we get, we got approximately six violations in thirty minutes. That mean uh two hundred and eight vehicle passed in that thirty minutes, that means four percent, close to four percent of the vehicle that is running right. You go over the speed limit and in this case, we add the camera over ten miles an hour. Yeah, over ten miles an hour, so this is a a lot of vehicle that when any safe driver from the city are taking the exit to the highway. They're getting risk and the people after one or two years, they're gonna learn that the cameras are there, they're gonna start reducing, so you're gonna prevent the accident as well. In that area and getting the information with that. That in this case is maybe obtain a revenue from two to four million dollar new revenue for the city. In annually, just an approximate eh by these numbers. And remember also can change depending say people how they pay, it's not a hundred percent of people pay one year, so that's also taken consideration in that point as well. Uh but it's not any eh.
I think Iowa is about, I think the average is sixty-five percent higher than the first, sixty-eight. They might, some of them might miss the first notice, but they get the second notice.
So that's the information that that I get requested outside, um I can I bring all the information or you have any question?
Your cameras, if it's a terrible snowstorm, is, are there heaters on it or what keeps the lamps from getting?
Yeah, we don't have that problem, we have the cameras in Dubai, but it's, you know, the desert really bad and we also have camera in Alaska, also in Canada. And we don't have any problem, the cameras are for traffic.
They're sealed, right?
Yes.
They're just vibrating, so whether it's cold or heat, they're self-contained.
And another thing, they all camera doesn't use flash, so and now you're never gonna see like blinking lights in the area, they use a eh just infrared.
I had somebody call me tonight and they said, well, there's a certain cost, I said, no, there's no cost to the city whatsoever.
No.
You get a certain percentage in the city.
Exactly, yeah, from one percent we pay all the rest.
We get the low percentage.
Yes, normally the city will get from sixty to seventy percent of their revenue.
Not to put you on the spot, but do you have any questions or anything that?
No, necessarily.
And did, didn't give you any?
No, he's.
I, I was, I was the one that originally talked to the chief, he reached out to me a long time ago and started to talk about it.
I know he's.
And I remember his wanting to look into the and and talk about it, it was the same reason I talk to some other chiefs in smaller towns. Especially when they have smaller personnel, but anytime you have an accident out there, even though that's an interstate and state might take care of clowning it. Your fire department, your police department, that highway, and he told me that he's had issues with firemen almost getting hit, he said last year, he almost got hit.
We've had fire.
I was gonna say, we've had a fire fighter hit.
Okay, it's, it's just a matter of time for some to kill out there. So what he was saying was, if we're having to put our city services, especially when it happens, everyone's up there. So everyone here is up there and um instead of sending officers out there a lot. He knows that cameras might be an option, so we started discussing it, so that's why he wanted um the discussions and that's why a lot of people and in Iowa right now, it's really, I mean, we had. I was glad you didn't mess it up, cause we were in four other cities today, so I would have been up here something else at some point, I can't keep straight where we've been today. But I know that's why you reached out to me, um the numbers, even though you look at that half hour segment and then we put it out, you know, you're still looking at. Um actually, I did the number myself, but you're probably looking at just that one side of the road at that six and thirty minutes, about eighty-six hundred a month. It's how many tickets you're going on the one side of the highway, you double that by going to the other side. Now that would probably drop a little bit because you're not, you know, it's probably inaccurate for twenty-four hour system, we're not up here, we didn't. We don't have the time right now to bring up the system and just drop it for uh two weeks, but this is enough for us to say that we do know. That there is a high rate of speeders if you come back, even though it's four percent, it's four percent of probably, I think it's somewhere between fifty-five and sixty thousand cars that are going by. So that average makes sense when the police are saying, we've had a fireman hit out here, we've almost been hit out here, um and we'd like to try to slow that. Because we are seventy zone and a lot of people doing well over eighty and uh we've looked at it, we concur and we're willing to come and put the systems in for and do the program.
I was thinking on enforcement as far as break-ins too, because our officers can't be everywhere in town, you have a break-in, then you can have this utilized.
If you have a camera, you'll never not know who's here. So we have it on our LPRs, we have a ninety-nine point seven percent capture rate, we don't, we don't miss it.
So how many cameras would you put on the interstate?
One on each side.
One on each side.
Unless, unless D O T.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, sir, hold on a second, please. Help me out, Mike.
Okay.
Where's your fire district at? How far do you guys go down the interstate west?
About a mile.
How far to the east?
About a mile.
Does two cameras cover a mile when these fire guys are out there, because we're talking about firefighting safety now? Does those cam- cameras slow down people a mile away from Stewart exit?
They cover about.
Three to four hundred feet.
Correct.
But to say on that.
Well, we got more, and everything depend on the city, we recommend to start with two cameras, where is the city who wants to cover the whole two miles or one mile, we can cover that too.
Well, I mean, we're just sitting here talking about safety of officers being out there in the fire department and everything else, well, they go way beyond just the the exit right here.
Yes.
Right.
So we're only talking a narrow window.
No, and you don't wanna put it right at the exit, you gotta put it somewhere out there and your goal from the cameras is people, that's why everywhere else has people slow down. Word gets out, you publicize it, you'll get stories on it, people see signs saying you're approaching cameras and people will slow down through the stretch of roadway.
Exactly.
And that's.
There's where the reps are.
We do have the capability of doing it. Put one at the start of your mile and one at the end, we can tell somebody through that entire mile. Um but really, no one in the U S is doing that right now, it's possible, we can do it, but most everyone's doing spot speed and that's what this is. So we put it in the right spot on a highway that gets you the most coverage and gets people to slow down coming in and knowing, if we're going through Stewart here, we have to watch because they have cameras up.
How far from the camera do you put the notice that the cameras are at?
How usually, how far?
The two C, um about five hundred feet, uh you can put them, um it's at the discretion, but I believe it's um three, three to five hundred feet from the camera.
There.
Yes.
Last time you told us, not only does it catch speed, but if there's an amber alert or you said stolen car, that's gonna notify your officer personally.
Yes.
Now, just, we have a lot of chases come through here, right?
Yeah.
I mean, stop, more than we'd like, that would also help.
Yes, and if we have different. Send to camera there, I said for speed enforcement, right, but we can add more cameras than just our F P R for safety and they tell you where the cars are and everything.
Is there a delay in the time the camera takes the picture to the time it is sent to the officer?
Five seconds.
Less than five seconds, you'll have to order to your computer.
So if we had an amber alert and that car pinged underneath our interstate, five seconds later, Officer Martinson would get a notification.
He get a notification, email and to his cell phone.
He guarantees five seconds, uh everywhere we have them, that average officer is getting them two to three seconds.
The reason I asked is uh a couple of weeks ago, there was a an amber alert um. Out of a different state and they kept pinging the phone and they kept, uh they kept relaying it to each town, cause nobody could could find the vehicle. Because there was such a delay from the time of the phone ping to the time it got relayed, it was, I mean, they said that the car was, you know, going by the Dexter exit. So I went out there to sit and watch for it, next ping, the car is in Cass County. So it was so delayed that it was hard for anybody to even find the vehicle.
Capors are um anywhere from a two to five minute relay back, or two, two to five seconds.
Not, not to be rude, but um. This gentleman that came here before gave the sales pitch we've done tonight, what's the number share? I guess my question is, if we go into a contract with you guys, what's, what's, does it cost the city of Stewart to break that contract? If it doesn't work and we wanna part companies, what does it take, what do we have to pay to reject the contract?
The standard, I mean, photo enforcement, if you put poles in the ground for, if you're just quitting because you wanna quit. Um it's usually between a thousand or fifteen hundred uh per pole for the remainder of the contract that you have left and that's just to recoup the construction costs.
My the percentage that we get as a company is like thirty percent, I would say thirty-five percent of the revenue collected and the city will get the rest.
Now to say that, I've never in, I've never seen that in my twenty long, twenty year long enforcement career or the, or the eleven years I've been doing photo enforcement.
These mobile units are just like a two inch ball, you put it on the back of the pickup and take off wherever you want.
Uh it's just a solar trailer that we bring in when we can.
No, I mean, if there's an, what I, what I notice is there's accidents and if you can have that ahead of time, it's ahead of time, it'll get people slowed down.
Yeah, I don't have that one yet.
Yeah, you have this one, this is a mobile one, they have the signs and everything everywhere and solar panels as well and the cameras. Um that one we is doing everything what we just mentioned and we be able to move. All the mobile one in the tripod, but I think this one is gonna be easier and better because they have all the component electricity and internet.
But can, what I'm saying, can our officers move that or just your company?
No, they can move it, we can't.
They, we can take it out to the.
They can put in the truck and.
Yeah.
I remember.
Yes. Yeah, they actually have a G P S.
Yeah.
It's G P S P O and everything there and automatically they have this containing by the G P S the location in that.
What's the length of your contract?
If they, if they take you in place, it's just usually a phone call and then the engineer can actually set it and move it to the right angle for a moment.
Yeah, remotely.
What's the length of a normal contract?
Five years for the initial and then usually then it just, what we do is uh our standard contract is a five-year initial term and then uh. It uh automatically renewes for one-year renewals, kinda unlimited unless the city just sends a thirty-day notice and it's.
And so if we were to do this, you would prepare a contract for our city attorney to review. For him and the chief and the administrator and then that's how that works.
Yes, we'd also give you a sample ordinance that the other cities are using in the state that's already on use.
And then you just start the process with the D O T and we just sit back and watch.
Cameras installed usually within ninety days.
Yeah, we get the locations that you guys choose, um whichever would probably usually come from the police and to see where the most violations and most speeding occurs. Um and then we can install them there.
What do you say the projection from the two lanes of interstate was, was it wasn't a lot?
Yeah, my math was, yeah, about eighty-six forty.
So.
On that six every thirty minutes, but I, you know, I like to do math, you know, and that, that comes into about.
So just.
Yeah.
Eighty-six per half an hour or per?
No, eighty-six hundred per month, but that's just one direction.
Per month. Per month.
So say it takes a minute to approve these things, which is low value.
Yeah, we only have the westbound, so I.
Well, it's potentially eighty-six hundred for the other one.
Sixteen thousand.
I don't, I don't, I don't actually, I don't actually think you'll, I don't think those numbers will, I always say, if you're looking at sixteen, I mean, yeah, that's a lot, that might be other thing. But despite whatever, since the goal of this program is to take whatever that number is in the beginning and then the first eighteen months, just. Kick it in the teeth and get it to start dropping down, cause the lower that goes down, over the first, statistically in a camera program, usually in the first eighteen to twenty-four months. And you should see uh accident rates go down from anywhere from fourteen to fifty percent.
I think what James was saying was that it said, I think, four and a half hours, so that's eight in an hour, if you go the other lane, that's sixteen per hour. If you're saying that is one to two minutes per, I don't know what it's gonna be for the officer.
But but remember, we use doing in the daytime, so using the approximation about twenty-four hours, but remember after A or F, there is not too many traffic like in the movie.
That's what I was just.
So it's gonna be done.
I, I understand, but we're still, we're still looking at maybe a half. I don't know, that's, that's half your time during the day potentially, up to, you want to give it one person.
When I was a a officer in the Secret Orlando, I installed the program, I was by myself, uh we normally take approximately three hours uh a day. And I was issuing close to a hundred violation, a hundred thousand violation more eh than one more like here.
I think Shane had a question.
And the reason is because the officer don't need to write anything, he have to see the emails and he's gonna see the vehicle information and the owner. So it's everything, there are photos and everything.
We have a way to start preparing for this in the beginning too, because your first thirty days are warnings. We send warnings out to the public, one per plate, so if they come by nine times, we're only gonna send them one, so they don't see nine pieces of mail. But everyone's gonna get a warning, that alone should start dropping it, but we also see the numbers, we see the traffic flow fully, we see what the incidents are gonna be and we start liaising with the police department. Because depending on the size and what their capabilities are, they're learning, cause during the warning period is when they're training on the back office and sending out warnings. And we learn, you know, what they can get through, if if it's just too much in the beginning, then then we go to them and say, would you like to raise the threshold for a while? Cause they'll just send you the ones with a higher threshold for a little while, uh until that gets under control and then we can kinda lower, we can do this to stages. Um it's not to see how many tickets we can pump out.
Shane, do you have a question?
We already covered it.
Mr. Mr.
And I wanna ask you a question, can I take five minutes to?
Yeah.
Do a math for me, please. Not, not it.
Five minutes.
But you'd be everybody. I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying.
They had traffic cameras and speed law cameras everywhere down there. Nicer neighborhoods had more, I think it was a safety factor. That and probably the.
Well.
And they had multiple.
That's, that's how it works now. That's a report.
So that's because of the volume.
Yeah, we're driving.
It's rude.
No.
Yeah. Hey, what they did. Not working out too well.
Does any other question or?
So how, um, how many, how many other companies in Iowa are doing this?
Um, I think right now we have a Gaxo. Uh, that's a company we worked before.
Okay.
And, um.
One, two, three. Four, about five plus.
Yeah.
About five other companies. And how did, were you recommended to our chief of police or did he just kind of pull you out of the hat? You know, you know how he, how he came about?
We normally send email, uh, try to come here to show the cities, um. So it's something that we just go city by city and see.
And cold call them like, oh, no.
Exactly.
Actually, oh yeah, the chief reached out and I think he probably knew. I, he reached out to me when I was with the other company.
Oh, okay.
So he knew what other towns around your head.
Okay.
And also that presentation in the Estes.
Right, and it, and this went a while and then I had moved companies. And I, I went over to, uh, Inoptic because of the technology and the broad spectrum, not just being able to do red light and speed. Um, and so I, I called him back and said, just reengage and said, I'm with a new company, but I can still do the same thing you were asking, uh, with smaller footprint of camera and I can actually do more. I could give you the LPR. We also have another box that we talked to him about. If you wanted a traffic catch, we have a wireless cell detector system that is capable of things. We have a lot of things that we threw Homeland Security that are now available to local municipalities too. So like in the case you're talking about, uh, somebody steals something, is driving away. We give you the plate number so the police can go in and find the car. We actually have a device that can go on a pole and actually tell you whose cell phones and what Bluetooth devices, what wireless devices are in that car.
And in this case, um, like the competition as well is like for experience, we are directly, you know, company that, you know, factory equipment, do everything. Normally all the companies are distributors that buy from companies like us. So that's always another differential with all the company as well as financially. By city, you need to make sure that the companies that you're getting have the financial also to move everything forward.
We're always moving forward smart on buildings. So this year we're pilot distracted driving. We're actually in the states that have hands-free laws. We have a camera that says in cabin technology, you can look through windshield and the artificial intelligence can tell if you're holding the cell phone in your hand. So we'll be.
So you're able to just shut down a vehicle on the interstate instead of chasing them?
I, I'm surprised it's never going to come up where all cars are required to have this chip. When you're following it, the police can somehow get the transponder, you know, just like, uh,
someday.
RFID, RFID chips that, you know, boats use to come in, that, that the sensors can tell that they're in the harbor and they go on there.
So again, how many towns in Iowa do you guys have?
Yeah, right now we have the one in Orlando, Texas.
We're setting up our first right now, but we're, we're doing this in, in phases. We actually have, uh, four others looking to come on, three or four others looking to come on. Hope we're trying to do all at once.
We just been from, with the mayor right now, he's also a council meeting tonight in Nevada.
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 Yeah, Nevada, we don't want to cancel.
That is the same situation. In the last two one, three people died in, close to the exit and the entrance of the town because they had the same highway, everybody go over the speed.
Yeah, we stopped after eleven minutes. We had eight tickets, we're like, we're done. You, you have a problem.
Does, uh, so with the, you have to post a sign, right? Three to five hundred feet in advance. Do you guys have statistics? I mean, I know you guys are, you had some cities northerly that has snow and ice. Like, has that resulted in any sort of traffic accidents because people hit the brakes when they see that sign?
No, especially at speeds, it's not that they're slamming on brakes. Uh, they usually see this line, they'll just ease up. We've, I've never seen it where accidents increase in the speed.
He just like for enforcement.
It's usually red light cameras because they're, they're, and that's just usually rear end collisions go up for a little bit because they're braking hard. There's never been any data to, uh, to say that accidents have increased in speed. Actually, the MTSB did a study across the US on speed cameras and, uh, saw, uh, a rate of reduction in speed and actually recommended them across the US.
And also the GPS in the car. In advance, let you know that ahead you are a speed enforcement camera. So you have the GPS in your car telling you, it's coming a camera, you have the sign. So we tried, the last one is when I get the pocket, then this next time you're going to think twice.
I don't think you guys have been down on interstate two thirty-five before because everybody stands on their brakes on those.
I was just going to mention that earlier, about that, yeah, I was actually on two thirty-five and there is some people that will just keep going. And there are some people that will slow down for ease off the gas. Cause you know, it says sixty, I believe it's Steven. And people will slow down and then once they pass the camera, cause they know where it's at.
Yeah.
And then they keep going right afterward.
Where, where am I?
Uh, I mean, it's like on, uh, two thirty-five.
But where?
I want to say about full ish.
Yeah, no, it's forty, I mean, it's forty, forty seconds.
Yeah. There, okay, Henry, if you just look at, who's the.
Three times we.
You can see them.
Local maps, Apple and Waze that you're driving by, they all have a different camera icon. But when you see it on your map, that means you're right.
You're right.
You see it, there's going to be a camera. You might not see it, the ones in Des Moines are up in the gantries. So you won't see it because they're on the backside of the signs.
Yeah, you'll pass it or you.
You won't even know, you'd have to know like we do. To look up and know, there they are.
And I, and I can say something. You're now asking about whether people are stopping the signs. Yesterday I was there, four people with a car, with a comms, with a camera. And trucks was going the two lanes.
Oh, yeah.
So.
They do it with red flashing lights up.
Yes. And two trucks at the same time using the two lanes.
Unfortunately, we don't need our officers out there.
Unfortunately, nothing's ever going to fix the problem, right? That we're saying, it's just unfortunate. Um, all these are, it's just another tool that, that lessens the problem.
And the police officers can see everything from the office, you don't need to be there.
Yeah, so.
So sixteen thousand uh, alerts a month. The officers are going to get twenty-one alerts an hour on their phone. An hour.
Wait a minute.
Oh, no, no. They don't have alerts for the tickets. That's in case a wanted vehicle or something comes off the LPR.
That's the only alerts they get.
Yes.
Only alerts they get.
Safety.
Yeah.
They have to log into a program on a computer, correct?
Yes, and the officer in the police department let you, let us know, okay, is any, is it close to the school? Like a Red Alert or so, people that are not supposed to be clear to each other. We create one group. All these people is going to get this message and alert for that. Stolen vehicle, you can have one alert separate in an email or another phone. And it can be different groups. But it's alert for safety.
Yeah, the, the tickets are an actual program. So they can like, let's say Shane has, you know, twenty minutes of downtime. He doesn't have call and he knows that he can go through some tickets. You, you can log in.
Yeah, he can log in anytime.
Yeah.
Normally when I was in the City of Orlando, the person who worked midnight, he the person who was doing the violation. Because not receiving too many calls, he got more time to be able to do the violation during his time in the, in the office. So that's how we, we handled it in the beginning in the City of Orlando.
Can they do them from their, their vehicles?
Yes, in any computer. And they can log in any night they want and they will see, well, that's three hundred, it might be a hundred, but they have fifty. And he can do their own time.
We've been in tournaments who have done it for overtime with their officers and because they can do it from any terminal. They can even do it from home and it doesn't really matter because the system itself knows who. Anything like that, so. I just see that they average between six and eight thousand tickets a month. And he just does it himself, he doesn't have anyone else doing it.
Now, with a new revenue, you can increase maybe more officer, more paramedics, more, eh, vehicles or any tools they need to get better.
Fire department.
Yeah.
That's whole time fire department.
Yeah.
Well, since I, I think we've talked enough. For me, I would like to go ahead and make the motion to look at the contract and have our attorney look it over.
Can we shop around? There's other companies out there.
I mean, there is, but.
We're talking a five year term.
But we're talking about, I mean, a company that's going to give us five seconds versus five minutes of notification if you have.
Actually, none of the other companies have, uh, some of them don't even have LPR. We're the only company actually in the US that has LPR integrated.
By experience, because I was in the City of Orlando doing this with beating and stuff like that. I can tell you the truth and it's open to you guys if you want to do any video, anything like that. But for, for experience, you can call the companies and tell them what you're going to offer me. And by the phone, they're going to tell you a speed or red light, anything that make money. We are the only one right now in any city say that we can offer you a package with safety for the other thing that you need. Uh, we can cover it with all expenses, with all percentage. And the difference is because all this company need to buy equipment for all the manufacturing company. They need to pay a person for the software. So they are really higher investment than us because we build the equipment and the software. So that's two different things.
And, and I think, you know, we do understand that. I think as, uh, citizens ourselves spending citizens' money, it behooves us to also reach out to maybe at least one or two other companies. And then when they come back and say the stuff you're saying, we go, okay.
We're not spending money.
Okay.
Right.
Well, the city saying it's not spending money is right.
We're not spending money.
They fracture.
I get it. It still behooves us to reach out and do that as stewards of the city, in my opinion. Some other people have other opinions, I get it. I could, I could, I've gone on sale pitches before. You know, everybody has, you know, you hear something that sounds great and maybe it doesn't turn out to be so great. I'm not saying that in this case. But if we did this, then we could say, yes, we reached out, we looked at it and we went with this.
We're the one who tells the shit, you're right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, so for me, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead with my motion as I was saying. And to have them prepare a contract for our review, just and have our legal look at it and see what we're looking at.
And we got a meeting the twenty-third, in February.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, that's my motion, so take it for what you want.
Motion by Renzo, is there a second?
I'd like to go off of Chief Reha's recommend. I mean, if he thinks they're a good company, then that's okay with me.
So we're just, we're just getting the contract and reviewing it, right?
Yep, just getting it and looking at it.
I'll second it, getting a contract review.
Okay, second one, Morgan. So how do you vote, Kapadri?
No.
Morgan?
Yeah.
Kaba?
No.
Doley?
We're just getting the contract to look at it.
And to review it. I'm not saying.
Yeah.
Renzo?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for him?
No, we've heard of them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now. Things to, to, to add here while we're getting to the comments.
I, I was making to inform Nate, uh, early on. We had another. Table that's where we have the question, I might be able to answer.
Did you guys, I would just go table names.
Did you guys get the, uh, video link? I don't have any questions.
Okay, table nine. Ten. Future use planning, you talking on this one or?
Uh, I think around the table it because I don't think you've seen the future uses, right?
Uh, we, we got the P and Z minutes that show landowners and stuff like that. Is that what you're referring to?
Did it have the future uses for the joint? The packet that I saw this morning did not have. Probably not. The future use was morning. It was what I had prepared for P and Z, it wasn't what they filled out.
So this says, it has the parcel numbers, the adjoining zoning, the adjoining future and the future use with the landowner and then notes. Do you want to see it?
But is the, is the future use column filled in?
No.
Yes, yes, this is. You're looking at the wrong one.
Oh.
This was.
The line in the back, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Oh.
About this.
That. Okay.
This one?
So.
Yes, the one I, the one that they passed out earlier, I just asked.
That was just giving.
He's got it today, so. I, it's up to you. I mentioned the mayor and Ash, um, Matt had checked with Chris Whitaker about getting a map made so that you could look at it, which I think would be easier to use.
Yeah.
And, uh, Chris quoted a, his first quote was. And I think he had in mind doing the whole process, going through with P and Z, which, uh, we spent three meetings on this, uh, three long meetings. They put a lot of thought into this. But there, uh, and, and just to do the map, Chris was quoting, uh, twelve hundred fifty dollars. I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, uh, I wonder if we can get the, uh, the cemetery software people to do maps. It's, it sounds like the, they're more reasonable.
V and K is offering to.
Well, they put, put a map together. But anyway, what, what P and Z is doing here, uh, which instigated by the, the city council was looking at, um, zoning, adjoining parcels around the city, outside city limits as the city continues to grow. The first step for doing that, uh, to comply with due process, because whenever you change somebody's zoning, you're affecting how they can use their property. So to comply with, uh, due process, uh, you have to notify home, uh, landowners what, what your restrictions you're potentially putting on their property. The first step is to change the future use. So, um, P and Z went and for all the parcels adjoining, the, the city came up with, uh, what, what they thought the future use should be in a comprehensive plan. And that's important because if down the road, the city zones outside city limits, whatever the zoning is, it has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Cause that's what the public would be good notice of. The city sees light industrial going this way and residential here, conservation here, ag here, that sort of thing. So, so that's what they did. I wish I had a map to show you. It's, it's a lot easier to, to visualize that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a packed house quite a few years ago when we started to talk about expansion.
Right, right. And then, and, and the thing to, uh, remind farmers, because the farmers are just vitally concerned because in Iowa, agricultural land is exempt from zoning. That continues to be the case as long as the land is outside city limits. They are exempt from zoning. Once, once the land is incorporated into the city limits by annexation, either voluntary or involuntary, then the city can zone it however they like. But any land is, has agricultural use is exempt from zoning, no matter. I mean, I mean, you can go ahead and put a, a zoning classification on it. Our code allows cities to zone up to two miles outside of their city limits. Yes.
I didn't mean to, to, I just wanted everybody to do that. The mayor was around, was near when we had that big issue about that. That's the same thing. So we wanna have more transparency doing these things.
Absolutely.
As much as we can.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So it doesn't turn to be against us.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, that, that's where we're at. That's what got to this point.
So we need to wait, maybe to report or? I mean, I'm comfortable.
If you're comfortable with it.
If you look at the thing, I don't think there was much, much change.
P and Z put a lot of thought into that.
Yeah, that's what I wanna add. The P and Z and Warren were up here uh three, four hours that night. Analyzing each property. It's not something they just willy nilly.
Right.
They were very careful about it and put a lot of thought and a lot of time into it.
But we definitely either have to go with B and K or somebody get our maps updated, because a lot of our stuff.
They're already working on a, a new official zoning map, so yeah, I can see where.
But none of these are drastic changes. I mean, they're.
Compared to the adjoining property.
Right.
Right, right now, I mean, our current comprehensive plan doesn't have anything on the adjoining parcels. This, this will be something new. It's, it's expanding our future use map, the map that's in our comprehensive plan. And, you know, there was one individual on P and Z who wanted to go out two miles and in fact suggested to the well, I guess maybe to P and Z, they voted to recommend that the city zone out two miles. They actually did that. But in terms of the future use, uh we, we only went to with the adjoining parcels. That was a big enough bite to, to bite off.
But a lot of these aren't changing. I mean, you go from light industrial to industrial for a future use, so it's not too much of a change. And some of these are staying the same, ag, tag.
You, you're talking about the.
The future use. So, I mean, you take right here, Dudley Farms LLC for this one parcel, it's light, it's light industrial now.
No.
Isn't that what that is? LI?
All, all the parcels. List are outside city limits, so they currently have.
But what I'm saying is that it's currently zoned light industrial.
I know, but the property next to it.
The property next to it is light industrial.
Light industrial, so, okay, but then.
But none of these parcels have a future use and not, and nothing outside city limits is zoned. This is the first step.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it needs a lot of work.
I, I just, you know.
We have, we have.
I like what it's done.
The old generation, so we had a lot of issues, mayor was around, was near. So we just need to take it easy.
So what's the next step in this slow process?
Well, this is the next step.
Is to go with this.
Approving the recommendations.
Either do this or.
You, yeah, yeah. You either, you either approve it or you send it back and say, uh, we're not approving it because, you know, we don't like this parcel or we don't like your own concept or, um, because it has to come from P and Z and you either approve it or you send it back. Or you can table it if you want a, a map so you can look at it visually.
It would be good with the map and then going to the city attorney. That's better.
Yeah, and I try and, I'm trying to keep Dewey Dale in, in the loop on this, so.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see a map, just, I'm a visual person.
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't like.
That's, I mean, I don't care if you're.
There's, there's nothing.
I'm making. Trying to say we go with the P and Z recommendation.
I'll second that.
Move by Kaba. Second by Renzo. How do you vote? Kapadri?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yeah.
Kaba?
Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Lauren, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, eleven. Also going, Adam, continuation.
We keep the council problem, that's why I said, we need to solve the problem. Cool to the commission, and that's, those last three years. And it's just a council problem that does a lot for us.
So use any motion.
I'll move now.
One second.
Twenty second by Doley. How do you vote? Kapadri?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Kaba? Doley?
Yes.
Renzo?
Yes.
Okay, twelve, security, government, director, Matt Harf.
Hey, Mr. Bonk.
Hello.
Before you go down this road of access downtown, is this something that needs to be brought up at a joint meeting? I mean, I've been asking for a joint meeting for a few months with the utilities.
In fact, I think we had asked to have that set up at the last meeting.
I mean, it's been two, three meetings.
Yeah, trying to get that set up.
And, and the only reason why I ask is when I read your, your thing, it sounds like you met with utilities. And for me, the utilities want us to pay for materials, but then the city doesn't, I mean, we don't get the benefit of what we're paying for, right? I mean, to me.
Yeah, they were asking for the city council to consider contributing.
So I think, I mean, I think that's a prime topic for a joint meeting to discuss. I mean, we have other items that we need to be discussing. We have the cop, the athletic complex that we have talked about discussing with them.
Lights.
Lights, I mean, there's a, a whole list of things.
Did you set that up for a February meeting?
Can we, we gotta have special native owner to this one month.
I think we have a lot going on as a budget.
Can we, can we join a meeting after that?
I think our budget workshop that you're referring to has enough going on that we should do it a different time.
That's fine.
I don't really think.
See what the availability for that about.
I mean, do we want it soon? Do we wanna do it in February?
We'll do it in February, yes.
Maybe, can we do it at, I don't know how much.
We usually have five thirty and then our meetings go at six thirty.
Okay.
At the joint meeting, five thirty.
Six, that is fine, because it seems like a lot of council number working at once.
Yeah, but maybe, okay, so maybe six.
Six.
I mean, I can make it here.
So, so just, and there's kind of like, so having a joint meeting at six?
Yes, and then moving into our council meeting after that. Does that work? I can make that work.
Yeah.
So the joint meeting will be at six and we will usually, Nadine tried to find the time that.
And that's gonna be in February, November, February. So that would be the.
February the thirteen is our council meeting, so we'll start at six for the joint and then our meeting right after.
Yes.
That would be nice.
Okay, you don't have to worry about that.
Okay, so then you got a copy of my report with the holidays and miscellaneous look at the vacation times. There's not a lot in there, but do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, public forum.
We have our IT guy, Mike, is, who would help to pitch out to us, his own call and comes. And Roy being on the. He gets the same food that he tell again, I would, who's that, he's a, he told.
Okay.
If, if you have any question, is that, you know, because that's why I'm gonna, who, who, hopefully you will see this. We're getting a good service from him.
Yes.
On the. So we'll make it to home.
Uh, February fourth from five to eight, the place their house been spaghetti supper at the hotel was. And they connected there. There's a spaghetti supper in my option.
I, I got something too.
Okay.
I think we need to put on next month's agenda. We've kind of dropped the ball on this road project out here. Um, I, I know Jim said that he was gonna work with uh the county and do a temporary thing. I see that they milled up that shoulder off a little bit.
Just in two spots, right?
Yeah, but.
Right?
Yeah, but just a short.
But we also had drainage things that would be going into play too out here by.
We've kind of, I mean, where are we at with this? We're, we're pushing about two, three years on this and nothing's been done. So I think we need to.
So.
Put that on there.
Yeah, so we had the um slurry schedule and we were advised that uh one of our city workers was working with the county to come up with a fix for this, and we were supposed to hear about that in the fall. We haven't heard anything, so, and we, we mixed that based upon that information. And I do believe we need to get on this and uh I don't know, but is this something that we can uh use any kind of TIF funds for?
Uh, it's kind of tricky.
What kind of TIF?
It's tricky, but there was stuff on Chip's report that says.
I, I, I'm sorry.
No, but did you know, in his report, at our special council meeting the other night, there was, I don't remember. Do you, can I, is that from last?
Yes.
Can I come here for a second? I thought in his thing towards the end, he said um, something about you being able to.
Yeah, I think.
Potential, yeah, potential, something with the road.
I think he mentioned it, it'd be in a way where it doesn't make us raise taxes to cover that and doesn't take out a general fund either. I believe.
And I think.
It's been a month ago.
I think we need to get with the county again and see what they're gonna pitch in, you know, like they.
You know, I, I agree, I would agree with you, but at this point, I say we just do it and get done. Because we worked on that so hard prior.
Oh, my gosh.
Just to get them to come to the table, you know, and then we, we boot it, we, we put the project. You know, so I think if we do do anything, just keep in mind that we do it on our own, because I think we have the rep, uh, the, uh, wherewithal to do it. Also, the safe runs to school. I believe, well, I'm, I'm monitoring, but I believe that we could be able to use if the, if the bids come in higher, that we should be able to use uh the blank money, used to be the LMI. Uh, because I did talk to John Danos about that and he was kind of giving you an idea that we should be able to do that.
Right here. Right.
Go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yeah, go ahead.
So on page ten of his report, benefits of the higher caps levy, C was also, city is more likely able to fund Front Street slash White Pole Road improvements.
With that levy.
With that levy.
Right.
I knew I saw it in there, I just couldn't get it on board.
I don't have my.
Yeah, there is possibility we check, we work through chat on that.
Right.
We work with John, there's, Mike is talking to him. There is possibility. I think I'll go back to what Mike just said, is we had difficulties working with that. And I'm not feeling bad saying that about him. Mike had, it's kind of worked with me in the last three, four years, nine, four years. I don't have anything going.
We got to a point where they have made a policy and we're working, and maybe we just need to follow up with this because I know the city engineer, the county engineer was supposed to come with us. They have a policy to where a twenty eighty has to be developed between the county and the city for that structure. And they already said it was fifty percent of, fifty percent of their side of the road. So unfortunately, our road is half a dare, half Guthrie, so it'd be fifty percent of the north side of the road. And then a dare would have to be res, hopefully responsible for fifty percent of the other road, so it would be twenty five, twenty five and fifty. But we have to finish that twenty eighty and we have, and they were coming up with their policy and their engineer, what Josh is his name, right? Josh was gonna be doing that, and I think it just kind of fell off. So I think we need to go back and ask Josh where he is with that. Get our twenty eighty and see where we're at, because we were supposed to have a permanent fix and looking at numbers, but.
So those numbers are coming in high.
If the, yeah, if the yield.
Like about one point five to three million, just for half of the road on it. So that's why I was saying we had a, a, not a fix, but a solution to fill in those rest during that slurry, excuse me. And, you know, they did that from just outside of town over to Dexter. And is it great? No. It, did it cure the problem? It, it's lasted a lot longer than I thought it would, you know, because.
That was city limits, city limits, right, Mike?
Was that?
Yeah. That was city limits, city limits, wasn't it?
Yeah, we would do city limits and it included the drainage, because force had put that in there with that company to look at some drainage.
Nearby.
Which gains to be done.
And all of it, and go to by R and B. Okay, and that was like a hundred eighty seven thousand for that slurry, which would give us, you know, a little bit better surface to work with than those rats that are in there now. You know, and we're looking at, you know, one point five to three million just for half the road, you know? We're looking at sixty million dollar project on something, it, it will increase safety, you know? But we would be fixing an avenue that we're not gonna get anything back on.
Right.
We're, we're doing a street so the trucks can roll on it and take the product to the ethanol plant and the county, and the county can get those taxes.
Right.
And, and that's fine, but I, I'd like to see a little bit better partnership. That's what we tried for, eh? We, we really didn't see that, you know, kind of hoped for it. But my view is if we can do something for our citizens, get that slurry in there, get it done. Let's see what happens with the economic stuff, where everything comes in, because we can move forward at a later date.
So I'm a little confused, because we did get to an agreement with the county with the twenty eighty. If, if, they, they've already said they're fifty percent, which, okay, that's something. We were also looking at infrastructure funds, were we not? Is that gone by the wayside or are we still working with that?
The. They're not available. They're, they're.
That's what I remember you telling us.
Okay.
They're still working on it.
But before we jump into spending all this money, can we at least see where we're at with the twenty eighty? Just ask Josh where, and Jim where we're at with that agreement, and then we can start looking at options.
I thought before I got on the council, Guthrie County already gives thirty thousand dollars.
They were going to, but then.
No.
Yeah, that's a slurry.
No, they, we had an agreement with them. I asked for a contract to be done and it was turned out by the, by some people on the previous council. They said nope, and I said, well, I think we need a contract for the short term fix to hold Guthrie County to that number. Because the contract never got done and then they pulled back and they said, I don't know if we wanna pay it because we're looking at a permanent fix. And they went ahead and did funding for the permanent fix, like they set their, their financials up for a permanent fix and what it would cost. But it just fell after that. So I, I mean, I think we need to know where the county is with that and where the, because the policy is in place. It was just they were trying to, they were getting it in works and so Josh is working on that a year or so ago. So I think we need to find out where Josh is with that, because then that's probably structure of our twenty eighty and we get that in place.
We had it, and I think all the new members around here, we had it, we were gonna do the slurry. Okay, that's what we agreed to do, because we're looking at astronomical numbers. Think about the projects that we got going on now, you know, we got Longbow, we got, we got all that going on, you know, we got.
Also, gas line.
Out, out south, you know, do we want to take on sixty million dollars to fix the road?
But why didn't we? If I remember right, you were one that were, was against me for that short term contract. We had it. We had a short term, I asked for a short term, do you remember that, Ash? I asked for that short term contract to be put, to be drafted, and then we would work on the, on the permanent fix. And I was shot down. I can note that it was you and Brian and. And then, it doesn't matter who voted no, I'm just saying, we had it there, then they pulled back. So because we didn't act and hold them to their ground, they were able to pull back. So we chose not to go forward with the slurry mix, but I think if we contact them and ask them where they're at, and then we can make our decision. Do we go forward and pay for it ourselves and not, and go with the slurry mix? And just see where they're at with the project.
And, and I agree with, I, you know, first I, but I, I just wanna, wanna say we pulled back on the slurry mix based on the recommendation of a city board because he was working with the county best, specifically what we were told.
Right.
And I remember sitting here saying, are you talking about White Pole Road? Yes, um, no more, first it was, um, no more, the next meeting, we came to the next meeting, that person was here, I asked, I actually had a follow up, he said no.
I, I got an easy solution for that. Just call it a slot car track and go away.
Okay, you're welcome.
And you can make sure that city employee, I mean, and he's had a lot on his plate, and to make sure he's here the next meeting, you know, we can say, this is where we're at.
We'll put it on the.
At the very beginning, please.
And you will give the, yeah, we'll give all the information.
Hey, Warren.
Yes, Warren.
I, I know you're anxious to go home.
No, 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 no.
It's not about a budget.
Uh, it's not about a budget. I won't take that long. Um, I, I just wanted to discuss generally with the council, uh, the other issue that I, uh, for, for analogy, where occurred before you on Joyce Hicks Park. Uh, she's in the process of uh putting together a nonprofit, uh, similar to uh the Library Foundation or the, um, the organization that's working with Katie Geisinger for her projects. And, and it would, uh, you know, raise money for park benches or maybe put a trail in. There's quite a bit of interest in putting a frisbee golf course out there. And uh she's got some excellent people lined up. I think it's really gonna be a, a good thing for the city steward. She asked me to see if there was a, uh, any interest from somebody on the city council serving. And I know you got, you guys put in a ton of time, so I, I don't want anybody to feel obligated, but if somebody is. of time, so, I don't want anybody to feel obligated, but if somebody is, if this is near and dear to their heart and they would like to participate in this.
I mean, I would, unless they wants to or somebody else wants to.
Yeah, you know, when, you're saying like just be part of that.
It, it'd be like a board, you know, to, to raise money and, and, I'm unsure how involved they would be, you know, you know, it could be as involved as, where Project Restore was running, the Saint Center, I hesitate to bring them up as an example, because that, I, I don't think the Saint Center would have happened without Project Restore, but, but in the end, I think there's structural issues there. That's, that's the point we're at right now, the, the other thing, she asked me to bring that before the councils, so, she, she's planning to donate, you know, probably around twenty-two acres of valuable real estate, and I think it's, it's gonna be a good thing for the city to steward. Dwayne Daleen, the city attorney, you know, we need to work out parameters, you know, what kind of restrictions we're gonna put on it, and, and he obviously wants to review the abstract, I would if, if I were him, getting a piece of property. The property's worth a lot of money, a lot. Joyce is wondering if the city would pay for the abstracting, so she's not actually paying money to donate land to you guys.
The abstracting is just bringing it up to date?
Bring it up to date, and I'm pretty sure it was brought up to date when he passed away, so it's, it's not like it's gotta be brought up for forty years.
Right, but there really hasn't been much happening out there, that there would be a lot to bring in.
I'm not the abstracter, so I'm not gonna stick my neck out, but as far as I know, there, there shouldn't be much.
I don't think that's too much to ask for.
Well.
Huh?
How much is?
I'm not actually making a motion, because it wasn't even, it's just something that.
I just want to know how much.
Oh, it's hard to get an abstract today for less than eight hundred dollars, I mean.
That's something we could discuss next.
Stuff that I've been doing, I know you do a lot of real estate work, but, I mean, stuff that I've been doing here lately, the bankruptcies and foreclosures and stuff, I mean, sometimes it's three hundred, sometimes it's two thousand, I mean.
Right, it's hard to predict.
Yeah, I mean, I would think anywhere from five hundred to fifteen hundred-ish would be a good, I mean, it's not like it's gonna be ten grand, you're not replacing it.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
You're not replacing it, you're just updating it.
That's just getting nervous.
I don't want to consider the budget, it's, it's.
Okay, so you can put that on our agenda?
If you can get more information about.
If, yeah, give me some information.
I, I get a bid from Guthrie County, I'm sure.
Yeah, I know, we're willing to get it, as soon as you give it.
And Warren, did you say last time that the little section near Pipers is not?
It's not in it right now, there's, there's a lot in the half there, Pipers are actually driving across it to get to their garage, and we'd like to build a garage there. We haven't figured out what to do, and I, this is actually a public meeting, so I really don't want to get into the details, but there's a lot in the half there, Joyce wants to make sure that there's access from Western Street into the park.
The racetrack and back.
I would think that the lot that adjoins Pipers, for them to put a garage, a half lot would be, would be perfect for an access, but. That's not.
I'd say you need to sell for some, some other.
So Ash, you'll put on there the update from the county, so we can talk about it actually as an agenda item, right?
In February, I mean.
Yeah, in February, and have, make sure it's first thing on the agenda, so Ash, so Jim can answer any questions that anybody should have, and then you'll put this stuff on the agenda that Warren has, so we can make the decision on that.
Yeah, so, Dave or Christina, just give me a call, or anybody else.
Yeah.